I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with original justice for all.
Thank you. I think I failed last month, but I've been, on our first meetings, I've been trying to get a musical presentation. And I'd like to invite Rebecca Anderson forward. I've known her for many years.
Excuse me, Mayor.
We, um, come on forward. There was a fundraiser for Phila Stocking Phila Hart for the, they had, I guess, we were thinking about bingo. I had all these bingo cards. I was playing and I wasn't winning, I was, was, when he finally gave up. Her parents and her, and their two daughters, Rebecca Beanhoof over there, were there, so I gave them my cards. And then in the next ten plays, they won five out of all those cards, and I was losing that whole time. Anyway, Rebecca, please invite you to sing, and then after you're done, you might want to say a few words about yourself.
So I'll be singing, I'm in the Miss America organization, and I'll be singing the song we sing at Miss Oregon this summer. The impossible dream from Manal Mancha. To dream, the impossible dream, to fight the unbeatable foe, to bear with unbearable sorrow, to reach the unreachable star. This is my quest, to follow that star, no matter how hopeless, no matter how far we'll fly for the right, without question or pause, to be willing to march into hell, that heavenly cause. And I know if I only be true to this glorious quest, that my heart will lie peaceful and calm when I'm laid to my rest. And the world will be better for this, that one man scorned and covered with scars, still strove with his last ounce of courage, to reach the unreachable star.
Say something nice about yourself.
I'm a senior at Portland State University, where I'm studying environmental science. And I'll be graduating this winter. My parents are really happy that I'm graduating early. And like I said, I'm in the Miss America organization, so if any of you ever interested in the Miss America organization, we're a great organization that provides scholarship money all across the nation. Um, that's about it, so.
So who did you take your introductory statistics course for, the life sciences?
But he gave me a C, my second.
No favorism.
Thank you. Ah, no favoritism. I love it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Rebecca, it's great. Oh, I failed to do something. I was so anxious to get Rebecca here, and that was a great presentation. I convened the meeting without actually calling the role, and of course, I don't call it, but you do.
Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Pauly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Roth is here on speakerphone today. And Mayor Neely?
Here. Okay, with that, I'm going to read our proclamation, declaring September 17th to the 23rd, 2012 is Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2012 marks the 225th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Congress, and whereas it is fitting and proper to record official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable, memorable, excuse me, anniversary, and to the ringing of bells which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I Doug Neely, Mayor, and the City Commission of Oregon City, declare September 17th to 23rd, 2012 as Constitution Week. All citizens are encouraged to reaffirm the ideals of the firmers the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the discarding of our liberties. Remembering the lost rights may never be regained, and witness thereof, I have gone ahead and signed this on this date of September 5, 2012. I'd like to invite Deanna Way forward. She, uh, she requested the proclamation be read, but she also has a special event that she wants to announce. So introduce yourself, if you will, and, yeah, we can give you a microphone here. We like to record things, so.
Hi, my name is Deanna Way, and I'm one of the daughters of the American Revolution. This is Deanna Lee Barlow Chapter that's located here in Oregon City. And we are kicking off Constitution Week on September 17th, which is Monday, with a ceremony on the steps of the city library here in Oregon City, starts at four o'clock. Mayor Neely will be reading the proclamation again, and we will commence reading bells for one minute to commemorate this occasion. So if you're interested, please come out, ring a bell, and ring to celebrate our freedom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have here a period for citizens' comments. These are for items not on the agenda, but one thing not on the agenda that's listed here is probably something that will perhaps put off any citizen comments to after we've introduced the topic. So before I ask for citizen comments, I'd like our attorney to speak to an issue before us.
Is this the residency candidacy?
Yes.
Yeah. One of the issues, I believe it's item 6C in General Business, involves a question regarding a particular candidate and whether they met the candidacy qualifications in the city charter. In discussing how to proceed, given the short timeline, as well as the question before the commission, we have recommended that the process involve only written submissions and not oral testimony. So if that's something that you're interested in speaking on, the way in which to do it is written testimony, not to address the commission on this question.
And so I don't know to what extent we have individuals that might have signed up for that. The point is, it's not the mechanism we'll be using. I do have two people wishing to speak, Karen Mori and William Gifford. Would you both come forward, please, stating whether you reside in Oregon City or not?
All right, giving William's response. Karen Mori, I live outside the boundaries of the city of Oregon City, inside the urban growth boundary, so there is hope or fear.
I just never know.
I appear tonight as a representative, actually for the third time, for the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce to thank the city of Oregon City for their wonderful assistance for the Antique Fair. We've had another very successful Antique Fair. This year, we are especially thankful to former Public Works Director Nancy Kreshauer, interim Public Works Director John Lewis, several of their staff, including Kevin Hanks and Gabe Camacho. The city promised us a year ago that the Main Street tear-up would not begin until after the Antique Fair. I have to say, I went down Monday morning after the Antique Fair, and there was a monster hole at 10th and Main. That was not there on Sunday, thank you very much. The paving was completed Friday morning at 6:00 a.m. The Antique Fair was the following Sunday. The sidewalks are beautiful, the streets were beautiful. We had one tiny little issue over power, however, Gabe is a king. There's actually outlets on the top of our new light poles, and he managed to run extension cords up to them and took care of us. I'm not going to run through everybody, but we have many wonderful volunteers, including Commissioner Mum, Mayor Neely, Claire Mett, Victoria Alley, this year Jesse Holliday, who was not happy to be up at 2:30 in the morning, and Eric and Evan Mett, who helped in the, what used to be dark hours of the morning. And John, the choice of streetlights on Main Street is incredible. There were no dark hours of the night. If you have not been down on Main Street after dark, the new streetlights are fantastic.
They're wonderful.
And so many, many, many thanks to the city of Oregon City, including code enforcement, Public Works, Police Department, and everyone else who helps us to make this the most attended event of the city in the entire year.
You want to mention the one issue with skateboarders in the Police Department?
There was a little issue in the wee hours of the morning with a, I don't know what skateboarders doing out at 3:00 in the morning, but they decided to kick over a few tables and a few chairs, and I don't know who heard what clattering, but we suddenly had, I think, every patrol car in the city down there. They also did a wonderful job of keeping the citizens of Oregon City safe. All of the cars were off the street with the exception of one. And the young lady who walked up late to her vehicle didn't do well on her field sobriety tests, and they stayed with her until a sober driver arrived to remove her vehicle. So huge thanks to the Oregon City Police Department.
Okay, Mr. Gifford.
Would you like to share this one, or pick up that one?
Commissioner Roth doesn't realize that she's hogging the other mic. Apologies, Commissioner Roth. Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. And I just have to respond to an article that was in today's editorial and opinions in the Oregon City News about attacks on public servants. And particularly the case in point irritates me, that so much attention is being given to some activities from our, from our city manager. And I would like to remind those that recall, during the interview process, and I attended some of the interviews for the, for the city manager, that Mr. Frazier brought this issue up on his own volition in the interviews. It was nothing that was being concealed, it was, it was very upfront, and I believe those interviews are all on tape. You can go back and see how straightforward and honest he dealt with those in a very ethical fashion, I thought. The, um, the attacks on his character and the mayor's, I think, are nonproductive, they're counterproductive. And I would encourage all the citizens of Oregon City to be moving forward with positive attitudes and working together as a team, instead of trying to dredge up old history and making ad hominem attacks on our city officials and our city staff. So I'm just encouraging all of our citizens to move forward in a positive fashion. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to make, take one of the announcements I make at the end and put it forward. At this point where we have people, oftentimes they leave after the general business is over. I think some of you are aware that our federal enhancement committee gave a grant to the parents of murdered children for memorial to be constructed at the, at our Mountain View Cemetery. They've been, they got a grant for $15,000, and that finished up, that gave them sufficient money to go ahead and proceed. I think they've collected about $200,000 for this memorial. That memorial event is going to be open September 26 at 1:00 p.m. I think it's the only one in the state that exists for this purpose, and many of us were affected by the murders of some teenagers here a few years ago, and I'm very pleased that we're able to have this memorial at our cemetery. Again, that's September 26 at 1:00 p.m. With that, I believe that we go ahead with the adoption of the agenda. Is there anything that should be pulled from the consent agenda?
Move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Nancy keeps correcting us, we don't have to do that.
That's all right, but you made the motions, I didn't want you, let's go. And our first order of business is a second reading of an emergency ordinance, as it is no longer an emergency, authorizing submission of explanatory statements by the city for the inclusion in the Clackamas County Voters Pamphlet for matters submitted to the voters under the referendum and initiative powers. Now, this is a general ordinance, the city at this time doesn't have the capability of putting forward explanatory statements, and so this is a general ordinance. It is tied to something else, but I'm going to have our city attorney discuss the situation if, if we in fact do not have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. This is, as the mayor said, it's an explanatory, authorizing the city to adopt, to include explanatory statements for general measures. The deadline for submission of any explanatory statement for the next election is tomorrow, April 6, not April, September 6. I have no idea where that came from. September 6, and if the commission adopts this, in order to adopt an emergency ordinance, in order to have it go into effect immediately, it's got to be adopted as an emergency, otherwise it takes effect 30 days after the adoption. The charter, Oregon City Charter requires for the city to adopt an emergency ordinance, and has to be adopted by a unanimous vote of the commission. So if the commission approves this ordinance unanimously, the city can consider providing an explanatory statement for measures on the ballot in November. If the commission approves the ordinance, but it's not unanimous, the window to adopt, to provide an explanatory statement for those measures, will not allow one for the November ballot. Yes?
But we'll have it on the books for future.
Yes, you'd have it on the books for the future and any, any future elections that will be authorized. This was a result of a rule change in the mid-2000s that required cities to adopt ordinances to adopt, to allow them to submit explanatory statements in certain situations.
Okay, thank you.
Your motion for the second reading.
I move for the second read, second and final adoption of 12-082.
12-1008.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Pauly, seconds. Can we have the second reading, please? And then we can have discussion afterwards if.
Ordinance number 12-1008, an ordinance authorizing submission of explanatory statements by the city for inclusion in the Clackamas County Voter Pamphlet for matters submitted to the voters under the referendum or initiative powers, declaring an emergency.
So do we have any discussion? I do have the city manager here as a, as the staff person, but I think we know what's to happen, so is there any further discussion necessary? Carry none? Roll call, please. Oh, yeah, you can come forward, I'm sorry. Yes. Dave Perdoo, too, if you want to step forward at this time, too.
Thank you, my name is Kevin Hunt. I reside in Oregon City. My position has not changed since I last appeared before you, I believe, on the 28th of August with regard to this proposed ordinance, except I would like to add that, in my opinion, the ordinance that you have before you does not comply with Oregon Administrative Rule 1650220040. It's been presented to you as one that will comply with that Oregon Administrative Rule. It does not comply with that Oregon Administrative Rule. I was very kindly invited by Mr. Sullivan to submit a proposed different draft to you, rather than just simply being rhetorical. I appreciate the invitation. I'm not going to do that, because I don't believe there is an emergency. And I'm not going to help you declare a false emergency. You're on record, all of you, or most of you, not all of you, many of you are on record. Commissioner Mum, Commissioner Pauly are on record from the 28th or before here in this room, as indicating that they believe that if the urban renewal measure passes, it will kill urban renewal. This is what punctuated the discussions that occurred over why, surrounding putting an explanatory statement in the voters pamphlet. It is patently obvious that the reason you want to put the explanatory statement in the voters pamphlet, or, excuse me, the reason you want to declare an emergency is so that you can put an explanatory statement in the voters pamphlet with regard to Measure 3-407. The reason that you have recited, or that you have before you recited, for the declaration of an emergency is patently false. It is not possible legally, let me just say this again, it is not possible that there's going to be an election between now and November 6 on a new measure for which you would be able to write and supply an explanatory statement. So if you vote for this, declaring this emergency, I hope you have both fingers crossed and behind your back, because it's not true. And while it's been, you know, all the attorneys agree that you don't have to have, you know, a fire alarm kind of emergency to declare an emergency when you're legislating. Any reason that is rational for accelerating the effective date of a law is pretty much okay. Mr. Gobysman and I agree on that, Mrs. Phelan agrees on that. That's really not, not what's at issue here. That doesn't mean that you can just, or should, just lie about it. And what I'm suggesting to you is, just because you can do something and get away with it, doesn't mean you should. Everybody's going to know exactly what you've done. Why is it that the very simple fact of the real reason you want to pass this ordinance and this emergency measure isn't recited? Why it's so hard about reciting the real reason? Why is this so difficult? Anybody who looks at the videos of these meetings is going to be well aware, but the people who don't take the time to look at the videos of these meetings, who can't come to the commission meetings and hear it live every week, don't have a clue. When they read about this, they say, oh, gosh, there's other things that may come up, and they need to put a statement in. That's absolutely bogus. I'm asking you, especially since we're proclaiming Constitution Week, and it's been declared that we must vigilantly protect the freedoms guaranteed to us through the discarding of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, I'm asking that you do something in support of government of, by, and for the people, and at least be honest. Thank you.
Normally, we don't take honors. I am, however, going to go to our attorney in terms of whether or not we meet the emergency standard.
Thank you, Mayor, and yes, I believe you, the ordinance that you have in front of you does meet the emergency standard. It's, the issue that you have is whether or not an explanatory statement has to be submitted within the next 30 days, and that's, that's really the heart of the question that is driving the emergency.
David.
Dave Perdoo, Oregon City. I would also like to speak to the Constitution Declaration. The original people wanted to have self-government. We wanted to govern by the consent of the governed. And I want to wrap up my presentation at the end by coming back to that point. I'm aware of the things that Mr. Gifford has said, both this time and the last meeting, August 28, about attacks, and I also would like to refer to this paper where Nick Varski talks about people trying to hide their true intentions under the guise of right to vote, and talking about it's a shameful sham. And Rob Crocker says, stop agitating and causing disharmony and dysfunction in Oregon City. And Mr. Mays has an article in today's paper about the agenda item that we're not supposed to speak about. But I just want to refer to an attitude that's kind of circulating, it's not civil, it's not recognizing that there are legitimate opposing interests and sides and arguments, and it's getting pretty tense, pretty dicey. And I would just like to put an appeal for people to not look at this as personal, that there are persons behind each point of view, but to try to stick to the arguments and recognize that somebody might be impassioned and make some kind of a point or discuss something or bring something forward, and that doesn't mean that that's a bad person or that somebody's at fault for having a particular tone of voice or whatnot, but there are real issues, and I would just like to appeal, as one of the petitioners, the three petitioners of Measure 3-407, that we try to stick to the issues. And for this person to say that the right to vote is a guise, that doesn't strike home for me. For me, it goes back to self-government, it goes back to consent of the governed. You know, you four people, and five, that's not here, can decide, you have the right to obligate the voters up to $130 million in debt, and we believe, in our initiative, that big, huge city debts ought to be the issue, and the right of people, the taxpayers, who would, who would be obligated, we think that they have a right to have a say-so. And for me, that's what this is all about, that's what this measure is all about. And I'll take the opportunity with Constitution Week to say that that's in spirit of how this country was founded, that you need to have the consent of the governed in what you decide, what we decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mum.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear and it's on the record. I don't think I ever once said this is going to kill urban renewal in, or on the record. Also, the reason why I'm pushing for that, this is because future is confusing for myself and other people. What does future mean to you? It's a confusing issue, and in my opinion, I think it's, we are obligated to write an explanatory sentence. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to, no, right now, I mean, if the item comes up, then we can have the debate there. But, no, 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 I'm walking a bit. The explanatory statement, the only thing I'm indicating, there would be, there would be opportunity to state, talk about that, should this pass, and we could vote, should it not pass unanimously, we still could have some discussion about 6B, even though we don't take action on it. Anybody else? Carol Pauly?
Yeah. Just to be clear with our goals, so we're all on the same page, our goal five is to increase communication with citizens and facilitate citizen participation. And that's why I think explanatory statements are important if, or if it's written not clearly at all, or if it leaves things out. People need to understand what they're reading and have a chance to, to communicate.
Yeah. William Gifford, then I'll check to make sure that Commissioner Roth might have some comments, too, so after William, I'll ask if Commissioner Roth has some comments.
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, live and electronic. Hi Kathy.
She's live!
Yes, yes. I would encourage the city commission to, I know it's difficult, because there are so many, so many related issues, but to be focused on the issue at hand, the issue at hand right now, at this agenda item, is talking about whether or not you should pass an ordinance to allow the city commission to provide a letter of explanation or not. It's just that simple. To get into rhetoric, and my apologies to Mr. Perdoo, whom I don't know personally, but this is not the time for promoting or campaigning for or against another measure. Right now, what you're talking about is the, is the ordinance, and I would certainly hope that the conversation can be focused on that ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Fowler.
I would hope that that could be happening, too, but I want to correct a couple of statements. And I do appreciate Dave's comments on, I don't think they're bad people on either side. I think people can have their opinions and share them, and I think we can do that civilly. There's, I just want to correct a couple of things that were said, though, and again, this is my opinion, and it's okay if others have others. The $130 million always gets talked about. It's not an amount that's been exercised, it's an amount that's been authorized. There's a big difference. The other fact that I want to talk about, just briefly, and I don't have much time, is why urban renewal... is why urban renewal bonded indebtedness has not historically been voted on. Because it's a different type of debt. There's geo-bonds and there's municipal bonds. Those are backed by property taxes and the public absolutely should have the right to vote on those. Bonded indebtedness for urban renewal districts are based on a project and they're based on the tax increment financing that will be derived from that project. It's a different type. It has to be rated by a bonding company prior to issuance. It's a different type of debt. I don't think the Urban Renewal Agency would move forward willy-nilly and ever exercise the full 130 million. And at the last meeting, I even went on record saying that I thought that was an overstretch in terms of amount for preauthorization. I think that could be pulled back and some of this fear of over indebtedness could subside a little bit. It's a different type of debt. And I know it seems crazy because everybody looks at their property tax statements and they see urban renewal on it and they think, I'm paying for urban renewal. You're not. And I know that sounds crazy for me to say, but you're not. State law requires that the indebtedness of an urban renewal agency be accounted for throughout the taxing authority body. So even though it's in an urban renewal district, it has to be accounted for by state law through the entire city. It's paid for by the tax increment financing in the district. That's why if it goes away, you pay the same amount on your taxes. Because by law, they ratchet down every taxing authority's amount so that you're really not paying for it, it's accounted for on your tax statement. That's as true as I can say it. So I know it's off the subject. I would encourage you to pass the ordinance. If it doesn't apply now, it'd apply for the future. It's, but it's your decision to make. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roth, you have, something you want to say?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Well, then with that, we can go ahead and call for the vote.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. Okay, the motion, the second reading motion passes. It, the, in the process, our explanatory statements mooted, it just won't go forward. But the point is, people wanted to discuss this and I would just make one comment, and it really has to do with the ordinance. This is part of the constitutional process. There's nothing that we've done that's gone around the constitutional process. Like I said, the title talked about future projects, or future plans. We already have an urban renewal plan. And all we're trying to make clear on it is it would apply to our current urban renewal plan. In the process, the plan is being altered by the vote of the people. And that's really the only thing that the explanatory statement says. We do not have a unanimous vote, so we will not be putting forward an explanatory statement on the urban renewal issue that's, will be before us in the November election. If there's anybody else who wants to discuss this, I've got commissioners listed, but I will take any citizen comments before I hear the discussion of the commission. So if anybody else wants to comment on the explanatory statement, that won't be in the voters' pamphlet. They're free to do so. Seeing none, I do have our commissioners listed. And I'll, I think I'll defer first to Commissioner Roth because she indicates she would have something to say. You want to speak now, Commissioner Roth?
Yes. My only comment is, is, you know, I believe that we need to look at this in the future. However, I really do not see the emergency for this one, so I would hope that we bring it up in the near future to pass the ordinance.
Okay, very good.
I think it passed.
Commissioner Roth, it passed.
It did pass.
It did pass 4 to 1, so it will go into effect. What happens, because it's not unanimous, it's not an emergency, it won't take effect until October 5th, 6th, how many days in September?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And Commissioner Smith?
And I just wanted to say that, you know, we have, as a commission, have had to separate these issues. That's not something that I can say for everyone in this room, and that really bothers me. And there's not very many times in my life that I've not enjoyed being from Oregon City. And it's times like this when we have two sides of an argument that are arguing over something that we're all going to vote on anyway. It's in your hands as the voters to educate yourself and to vote on this. So that's what, what the citizens of the city want, that's what they're going to get.
Yep.
And so why we've had to agonize over fighting in the last week and a half is sickening. And it doesn't make me feel good about being up here. It doesn't make me feel good about being from this town. And it doesn't help us move forward in any way in this city. So, and that's for both sides. We've got to somehow start working together. And it probably will never happen in my lifetime, but I'd like to pretend it could because I think the truth is, is that most of us agree on what we'd like to see happen in this city more than we disagree.
Yeah. I guess I'd like to comment briefly. It is a democratic process. I mean, there's implications. Somehow we weren't meeting the constitutional requirements. In fact, we are. The concerns that Commissioner Smith has don't really concern me. We all have opportunities to register pro and con statements in the voters' pamphlet. You have the capabilities of communicating the voters, the initiative process, if we put this on the ballot. I think it's, in fact, I think it's a great testament of the Constitution that we have and that we, in fact, apply those constitutional standards here in the city. We have it before us under initiative. If it passes, it passes. It's basically that simple.
It's simple.
And if it doesn't pass, there might be more initiatives in the future, I don't know. But in any case, that, I mean, I don't think there's anything that's happened, including the explanatory statement here, that violated in any way the constitutional process. And it doesn't disturb me. I mean, people who've raised kids and heard them fight before in the household, you know, the fact that we have an organized method in this country for dissent, I think is tremendous. And the fact that sometimes it gets heated and sometimes things are said that we might regret at one point in the future because they become personal in nature. It's still a process that's worked very well for us.
Yep.
And continues to do so. With that, I don't think, and if somebody wants to, so Betty Mum wants to speak.
I just have a couple of questions. I know that when the explanatory statement was first brought up, the whole commission was fine with Ed Sullivan writing it. So he wrote it and I did try and advocate for an independent person to write it. Well, it came back that we did eventually get that. So my question is, it's been vetted, it's been independent, is this something that we could put in the water bill?
I don't think it's a good idea.
I just want to ask the question.
You know, what, the explanatory statement is required to be neutral. We've got, you know, a third party that's vetted, it's neutral. The question, would it be a violation of using city resources to put this into the water bill? On first blush, it, I think it may well be legal, whether it's politically...
Well, that's what I thought Mr. Sullivan had said. And so I just wanted to know if there was that opportunity. I mean, we're not going to do it, obviously, but I want everybody to know we did have that opportunity.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay. We're coming to item 6C. Commissioner, Commissioner Polly will be recusing herself from this discussion, but she wants to make a couple of comments beforehand, I think.
Yes. Well, they said this was going to be an adventure and boy, it sure is. And it's okay to laugh, doesn't it feel good? This has been stressful for everybody, so go ahead and laugh at my silly words, but what a tangled web we weave, or is it? Well, let's see here. I, it was brought to my attention that I should probably take a Toastmasters class, so I wrote it down ahead of time. So hopefully it'll make sense and my thoughts will be concise. When I put my application in the interview for the appointment of commission position number three along with nine others, I did so to volunteer for the community that I love. Whether or not I was to be selected, I put my best foot forward, studied, turned all my paperwork in early and put all my heart into it. When I was contemplating whether to be on the November ballot to serve a four-year term for position number three, I deliberated long and hard about it. I already had a taste of the stress and combativeness of politics. In the end, I decided to run for the same reason I applied for the appointment, out of love for the community and the desire to serve and represent our citizens. As a very busy mom, business owner, community volunteer, and being new to this whole political thing, I submitted my paperwork a few weeks early in case I filled out something wrong or incomplete. I did not want to leave anything to chance and wanted to have time to rectify it if needed and not to be disqualified. I did not know at the time a grace period would be given if an issue arose, even if filing is the last hour. I would not know until the deadline night whom my opponent would be and was invigorated to find out I had a race. I'd been waiting. After his voter registration was checked, which is a requirement to be a registered voter, mine was checked also. I know it was because I got a letter in the mail that said because of the recent inquiry into my voter registration. So mine was checked. It was also found that he had an out-of-city address on his card. The reason, this may never have come up before, maybe every other filer had an Oregon City address on their voter registration card. The commission was brought aware of the fact the filer for position three did not produce the documents to support residency requirement. It would come down to commission vote. Feeling in an awkward position to possibly decide the eligibility of my opponent, I decided, very awkward, thank you very much, I decided early on that I would abstain the vote. Later, in one of many emails from the applicant's lawyer, it was suggested that I should absolutely abstain from the vote. In lawyer lingo, recused myself from consideration on this question. Being a strong, independent thinker who is governed issue by issue with common sense, who is running an independent campaign without a campaign manager or lawyer doing correspondence for me in order to reflect the average citizen, I felt a little threatened with the suggestion of how I should vote. To relieve the stress, I did what any busy working parent would do. No, I didn't downball a wine. I probably sell ice, but I do. I actually don't drink, but I had a date night with my loving supportive spouse. We went to see the movie The Campaign.
Very appropriate.
It was, it's a pretty interesting movie too. It's a little raw, but it's got some good points. And it felt great to laugh and get perspective and lighten up a little. I went away with my basic morals validated, running for the right reasons, not an agenda, making my own decisions, not having a lawyer or manager making them for me. And most importantly, keeping the citizens in mind every thought and action I make, not to be in the office for a self-serving purpose. I look forward to a fair and square campaign. My opponent had me to jump through the same hoops I've had to follow, follow the same rules everyone before him has had to follow. I look forward to campaigning about issues and work ethics, not personal mudslinging. For the citizens of Oregon City, I hope this is kept in mind. Instead of this real or imagined division of two camps, we should all only be concerned with one camp, the camp for citizens, the camp that works together for the best of the people. To have processes in place, run the city as a business, follow the rules and have consistency from person to person and situation to situation. Let us show our citizens that we can work together, discuss our differences without casting stones, being paranoid of each other, assuming there are ulterior motives and not giving each of us, each other, the benefit of the doubt. The decision made tonight should be one about process, one set of rules. Are we going to follow them or make exceptions? I do not feel one would be made for me and I would not want one to. I do not feel this benefits the citizens of Oregon City. It is my hope that we can show our neighboring cities and our residents watching that we can indeed follow our rules and make sound decisions, strive for clarity, not have infighting, keeping our citizens in mind, and put it in a nutshell, get our act together. Whether it is me elected in November or my opponent, I hope the commission becomes dedicated in bringing clarity of codes, ordinances, rules, and communications to all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to, before we go into this, I'm going to have our attorney here discuss the basis that we only receive written testimony. Two of the people that we have here will be coming forward, and that will be Kevin Hunt, who's serving as an attorney, and Michael Berman. I have somebody else here listed, but we have to go by the written documentation that's put before us. And I believe Kevin Hunt is familiar with that, and of course, Mr. Berman is too. So would you want to go ahead and discuss the responsibilities of this commission and the basis for us in making decisions?
Sure. And I'm going to talk quickly about process more than anything else. And part of what's driving this is that the, two important things. One, the speed at which we've got to make this decision. The issue arose, you know, the middle of last week and only recently got here. The second important thing is the importance of the right that we're talking about, the right to run for office and be part of the democratic process. And so with the speed and the process, what we want to do is create an opportunity for people to be involved and provide comments, but also to make sure that the procedural rights of the candidates were, the candidate was protected. Because the person who's most obviously affected by any decision this commission makes is going to be the prospective candidate. So the idea was to make sure that that prospective candidate, who is most directly affected by your decision, had the opportunity to appear in front of you. But also to make sure that the process was available to all citizens, to allow people to participate. We wanted to provide an avenue, an opportunity to do that, and we thought the best way to do that in order to keep the process relatively straightforward and not the potential to go off on some tangents, was to limit it just to written testimony and to allow the candidate and to appear in front of you, whether as himself, whether by himself or through an attorney. And so that's what we recommended, and I believe that's the appropriate way to handle this particular situation. So that's the process I, we recommend that you follow tonight. If you don't have any questions about that, I do want to touch on one other process issue that hasn't come up before, as one, and in particular, Commissioner Polly may be interested in this, and I touched, with, touched base with her on this beforehand too. With her recusal, there are four members of the commission. There is a possibility that there could be a deadlock between the four. Hopefully, we don't go there. But if we do, your charter says that the City Commission is a final judge of the qualifications of its members. If there is a deadlock that can't be resolved, there's something called the rule of necessity, which means that if there is only one person or one body that can make the decision, even though they may well have a conflict or may have some difficulties, they have an obligation to make that decision. It's necessary for them to do it. So if there is a deadlock, we have to turn to Commissioner Polly to cast the deciding vote. Like I said, hopefully, we don't end up there, and I'm sure if there's one person who wishes we don't end up there, it's probably her. But that is something that we, you know, again, given the deadline of tomorrow, we really need a decision tonight, one way or the other.
With that, I'm going to, we have, we have on record here several pieces of written testimony. I'm going to invite Kevin Hunt and Mr. Berman to come forward.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to give a staff report.
We'll get a staff report while they're coming forward.
Okay. All right. For the record, I would like to make a presentation on the events of the past week and let you know how the city, and the city recorder's office responded to these, the situation. I'd like to begin just with a brief history of the events. And beginning last Tuesday, August 28th, at 5:00 PM, this was the deadline for persons to register as a candidate to run for the City Commission. There were two registrations that were received that day. Following the first one in the morning, I immediately called the elections office to verify the voter registration. And then at approximately 3:30 that day, Mr. Berman came to City Hall also to register. I again called the elections office to verify the registration as well. During my call to the elections office, I learned that Mr. Berman's voter registration was not up to date. And later that evening, when I saw him at the commission meeting, I mentioned to him that there was a discrepancy... I mentioned to him that there was a discrepancy, and he would need to visit the elections office to update his registration. According to the city charter, there are only two requirements to run for office in Oregon City. One is to be a qualified elector, and two is to have lived in Oregon City during the 12 months preceding the election. The next day, I formally prepared a letter to Mr. Berman with my concerns over his residency issue that was apparent from the voter registration, that had given him a list and gave him a list of documents that he could submit that could clear the issue. Proof of residence can be accomplished in a number of ways. For instance, he could submit a document that would indicate where he registers his motor vehicles for his personal use, or the address from which he pays his utility services, or another one is the address on his federal or state income tax returns. On August 30th, Mr. Berman brought several documents to city hall as further evidence of his residency. Though he was now registered appropriately as a voter, the only evidence he had to show that he lived in Oregon City was his voter registration as of February 2nd of 2012. He was not able to provide documentation that he lived in Oregon City from November 2011 through to February 2012, as the charter required. It was a serious matter, and on August 31st, I sent Mr. Berman another letter telling him his name would not appear on the ballot unless further evidence of his residency was provided. The deadline to certify the ballot is tomorrow, September 6th. The city's charter also says that the commission shall be the final judge of the foregoing qualifications and election of its own members. I indicated in the letter that if Mr. Berman did not have further evidence to present, that he could present the matter to you as the, as the final authority at the meeting on September 5th, and he made this request to do so, and he is here this evening to do that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have throughout the process and this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt, if you make references to the specific documents, could, could you indicate what, do you know what we have in the order of our screen?
Yes.
That it's listed?
Yes.
So if you could, if you could point those out so we can pull them up as you're discussing.
Would it be all right if Mr. Berman gave you his statement first?
Absolutely.
Go ahead. Michael Berman, resident, Oregon City, 316 South McLaughlin Boulevard in Kanema. And I did not prepare a statement tonight as a, as a, something to read. This is pretty a simple matter for me, and it's a very serious matter to me because I think it's obviously different circumstance or something. It's important to have a process for establishing. In 2008, I lived on a houseboat on Marine Drive and was laid off, when a lot of people were getting laid off, and in the late 2008. So at Christmas time, I had a setback and had a medical, had a medical issue that sort of took the wind out of my sails. In 2009, I decided to go back to school, PCC, and took my courses, did well, was pretty excited by them, and was also driving out to my grandparents' farm in Beaver Creek. Weekends, I was painting the house, getting it ready for renters. They were deceased, and so that was my activities. I happened in, on the way through, I heard that the wheel was for sale, and I thought, well, maybe I'll buy myself a job. It probably wasn't the right location, and so I walked next door, and I knew that Terry Beenstedt, who I went to high school with, she was a little bit older than I was, but I've known her for a very long time. I stopped in to ask her about the wheel and see if you, if that was, if there's anything she knew about it. No. But she said that she just sold her place. I said, oh, okay. And the following weekend or so, I stopped in to see how it had turned out for her on my way home, and it didn't sell. So I drove back to the marina. I told my pop about it. He lived a couple docks down, and he worked at the mill for 40 years, and we thought, well, hmm, let's try it out. We'll buy the 505 tavern and maybe get some of the mill guys back, and for breakfast, they were took, looking at doing different shifts. And so Terry Beenstedt and I shook hands on the deal, and we moved forward for it. Now, the houseboat I lived in, I lived in with a gal for 12 years, and through my, being laid off and through some of the medical things, that began to dissolve, and through purchasing the 505, it really began to dissolve. So I sold my floating home. I moved my small cabin cruiser to Sport Craft Marina where Eric and Kim are, and I had this idea that I could sleep on the house, on my cabin cruiser, it's only a short walk or bike ride over to the 505, and work my tail off. It was this great idea until the sea lions moved in, and you know, you get off at, you get to work in the morning, and you get off at 2:00 in the morning, and you've got like eight sea lions to walk through or push through, and you literally have this like lightsaber dance with them to get to your floating home. It didn't work. We tried, and now Terry has another tavern, and she worked very close with me through the purchase and through this whole negotiation and getting the 505 up to speed. She has a home in Kanema that she grew up in. She's lived there her whole life. It's a large home. It's a two, it's a four-bedroom duplex, nobody living there. She said, I've got plenty of room. And that became my residence. For over two years, I've lived either at Sport Craft Marina on a cabin cruiser or at the 505 tavern. I can tell you about a night when I first bought it. We didn't have a lot of money to put into the place, and we were closing. I could feel and hear the ceiling shaking. I went upstairs, and the only big compressor in there, we have one large walk-in cooler, was shaking at about midnight, and at 2:00, it was really shaking. And I'm not a big clean freak, but pool tables aren't the cleanest surface. As much as they look clean, they're never washed. I laid my jacket down, and that wasn't the only time I'd spent the night at the 505. It was never a full-time residence, but it was my core of where I was. Sport Craft Marina is not a, a place where you can get mail. There's a three-houseboats or four-houseboats. I lived there in the 80s. We had a mailbox then, but a person living on a cabin cruiser typically doesn't get their mail there. I put all of my addresses at the 505. Between 10:00 and noon, the postman comes and hands to me my mail. It's more than convenient. It's a criteria for doing business. And so, plain and simply, since I've owned the 505, I've lived in Oregon City. Now, some people say you can't use 505 as, you know, the business address for that reason. When I found that out, I changed it. I was asked to come on board of the CIC. It's a citizen involvement committee. There's neighborhoods, there's also the Chamber of Commerce, and there's also Main Street. So nobody ever thought to look, I think, at the signature, when you sign in for the CIC meetings, what address I put there. I think if you look back, you'll find 316 South McLaughlin. And I know that there's several members of the CIC here, and I know that we've talked about Kanema and my neighborhood and the Kanema Woods, and about the trees that are being cut down, and I know that I'm on record of speaking about the trees in my neighborhood. Do I have a utility there? No. Terry's lived in that house her whole life. Why would I put the utilities in my name? I contribute to the utilities, believe me. So I wouldn't have that, but I think everybody here knows. And I want to say, if I was trying to prove that I didn't live there, and after being in Oregon City for two years and growing up here, I went to Mount Pleasant, I went to Gardner, I went to Oregon City High School, I was on the swim team for seven years, I went, I was served on the altar at St. Paul's Episcopal Church as a junior and a senior acolyte, PAC 188, Troop 220. This town knows me. It'd be very difficult for me to pretend that I didn't live there. If I told people I don't live there, overwhelmingly, people would say, you're a liar, and I think that's an important thing. I believe in the process that you have. I believe in looking for these documents. If I had just moved here and nobody knew me, and I lived in a camper somewhere, just out of town, I get it. The requirements that were asked for, I believe came out of maybe ORS statutes or somewhere, they're important things, but they're not exclusive. It doesn't say you must have these. It says it may include these. I think the testimony that I've given you tonight should be worth something to listen to. I know that I signed an affidavit that was, that was witnessed. I know that Terry Beenstedt, who I live with, who owns the, whose family owns the home, 316 South McLaughlin, signed an affidavit, and so I kind of feel like I'm a, some kind of a Cecil Beadham movie. It's a very, it's a, it's a very surreal feeling to try and tell people that I'm, I am a resident here, and so I hope that you appreciate what I've spoken about. There's not a lot to say. Like I say, I didn't, I didn't fill out a long letter espousing why I'm running for office. Obviously, I care about this town. I have an invested interest in the town as a business owner. I know that when I signed up for this deal, we were discussing it that afternoon, and it's not the first time I ran for office. I was Gardner Junior High School Secretary Treasurer. Ran a good campaign, I got it. And we were talking about civics and about the political action, and I agree with Carol Pauly. We're both in this, we're neighbors, we're in the same industry, and it seemed appropriate for an appointed incumbent to have a little rallying, a nice spirited competition. And so I came down to the courthouse or to the city hall here, and I signed up. It was just something that I wanted to do. I care about the city. I've got feeling for the city through the, through the last year at CIC and through the two years at the 505 tavern. It hasn't been easy on Main Street. We all know that. It's been a tough ride. As the CIC representative, people discuss a lot of things. It's, it's not easy to be a merchant on Main Street. I was surprised when I, within an hour, I signed up at 3:30, and at 5:00, we had an emergency meeting, and Mr. Fowler came up and smiled and congratulated me for throwing my hat in the race. And then strangely, he said, but you live in West Lynn, don't you? And I said, no, I, I live in Kanema, and you live, I know where, he lives in Rich Geiser's old home. I lived around the block growing up, and I don't know why he thought I lived in West Lynn. Elizabeth Fowler is part of the Main Street organization. She knows where I live. Many people know where I live. And then I noticed the Oregon City Business Alliance. I'm a business owner, but I've never been invited to join the alliance. I don't know what it's all about, but I do know that at 11:00 in the evening a couple nights ago, I looked it up, and on the Facebook page, there's only about one entry a month on this thing with 23 likes, and I noticed that the Oregon City Business Alliance had my agenda posted, and it had two likes, and one was Mr. Fowler's and one was Don Slacks'. I'm not sure if they're endorsing me and hope, rooting for me, or if they dislike it because they like it. I don't get that.
I don't understand what that is about.
Well, it refers to the fact that when Mr. Fowler congratulated me, he thought I lived in West Lynn.
But that's a private matter.
Okay. Well, is it, what do you mean, it's a private matter?
Well, the lights, the lights on.
Yeah, I don't, I don't get that.
That's not true. I just not mean.
I don't know who does that.
I just, I just didn't get the connection.
Okay. I'm just connecting at that, at one point, I was congratulated and then questioned that I lived in West Lynn.
Oh, that's what you're connecting.
And it connects, and then I thought, well, what is this residency thing? People know where I live.
I didn't know where you lived, but thank you.
I think that's all I have to say. In the absence of Charles Erskine Wood, I've got Kevin Hunt here, and I think he can speak a little bit more about what I've spoken to.
Thanks very much, my name is Kevin Hunt. I live in Oregon City. I'm also here on behalf of Mr. Berman with respect to his eligibility to run for the city commission of Oregon City. I want to thank Mr. Gabisman, who's been very professionally courteous to me, called me yesterday, and we discussed process for today, made sure none of us had anything going in with the other wasn't aware of. He and Mr. Sullivan have both been very courteous. I really appreciate it. Same with Ms. Ide, who fully complied with a request I made, public records request I made for all of the candidate filing materials going back eight years to 2004, and she's somehow dealing with all of this and the ballot measure problems and everything else. She had those to me by, before the end of the day yesterday, and I just think that when somebody does an efficient job like that, they should be recognized.
That's why she's city recorder of the year.
Finally, finally, I appreciate the remarks made by Ms. Pauly and her statement that she would recuse herself. I would note that in the course of her recommendation that we not think that there's ulterior motives going on and things like this, I know that she also made several allusions that she's not somebody who has a lawyer making her decisions for her, and I just want you all to know that Mr. Berman here is an independent, hard-working businessperson, and as his lawyer, I am not making his decisions for him. I am here, however, to help advocate for his cause, and his cause is that he is duly qualified to run for the city commission in Oregon City. As a matter of fact, the requirement in the charter is, if you think about it, it's probably not as artfully worded as it could be because it's impossible for anyone to comply with it. Let me say it again. It's impossible. Why is that? Because today, as I sit here on this date, I can't swear that I have been a resident for one continuous year as of the date of the election, can I? Why? Well, because in Commissioner Mum's famous words, quote, "I can't predict the future." I could move tomorrow. I could move a week from today. I could move the day before the election, and that would make me unqualified. I can't, well, you can roll your eyes all you want, but the fact is, it's, it's, it's a requirement that cannot, it cannot be met. It's impossible. So the best we can do is they could check to see whether somebody has been a continuous resident since the election, you know, since the election date previous. But that just tells you that up to the point that you check on it, they've been a continuous resident, doesn't tell you what they're going to do between now and the election. So if anybody signs a sworn statement that they have been a resident of Oregon City at the time of the election, and they sign that statement two months before the election, I want to know who invented their time machine. Now, you do have before you, which I've submitted, is that not comprehensible? Did I not state that clearly?
We answered what you said.
All right. Now, you do have before you, however, the affidavit of residence by, by Mr. Berman. Now, he, when he, when he made this declaration, he didn't declare that, that he had been there, he did it in the way I'm describing, that it is his intention that he will have been a continuous resident of the city for a period of at least 12 months immediately preceding the November 6th, 2012 general election. That's all anyone can do. Legally, your residence is where you sleep at night and where you intend to permanently return to during any period of absence. It's pretty clear from Mr. Berman's testimony that that's the case with him. You also have before you the sworn statement of his landlady and friend, Ms. Terry Beenstedt, who also attests to the same. Terry B. Enstad, who also attests to the same facts. And you have the written statement from Mr. Paul Edgar, who indicates that he has personal knowledge, he and his wife both, that Mr. Berman has resided at 316 South McLaughlin since about July or August of 2011. And in fact, they drive by there every day. And what do they say? They say Mr. Berman's red truck parked there. Now, as I've also pointed out, and I, you know, just the irony of this happening yesterday just really struck me, but The Huffington Post published this article about this fellow in Hawaii, who is actually the Republican nominee for the United States Congress and is homeless. Amazing. He's duly registered to vote because you can't, you can't be denied the right to register to vote on the basis of not having an address. He trounced his opponent, who was a war veteran, and he will be facing the Democratic nominee for United States Congress. I wonder how much trouble he would have running for office in Oregon City. And I appreciate that it's necessary to check on people's voter registration, their eligibility. That's an easy thing to do. And I'm satisfied by the documents provided to me by Ms. Iid, that in fact, that's been a standard procedure. I'm sure it goes back longer than this, but from the documents I have and the notations that she's put in the corners of documents, this has been a routine thing that's been done at least, at least back to 2010. However, there, when Ms. Pally talked about not making exceptions, and we've talked about not making exception for Mr. Berman, an exception's already been made for him. An exception's already been made even for Mr. Powell, who filed, who, whose residency's not in question. That's this. And looking back through all the other records, I find, and maybe this is a change in administrative rules, I'm not sure what happened, but most of the packets, registration packets, have this kind of a document. I have one here from Damon Maybe, from August 30, 2004. I have one from Dan Holiday, from August 24, 2010. I have one from Dan Holiday, September 2, 2004. It's called a Declaration of Candidacy. And in these, the person says, "I blank hereby state that I am a qualified registered voter in the City of Oregon City, Oregon, and that I have resided within the Oregon City limits during the 12 months preceding this election at blank in Clackamas County." Now, these are signed two months before the election, so, I mean, technically, like I said before, they can't really be true, but we know what the intention is behind them. Now, interestingly, in neither Mr. Berman nor Mr. Powell's packets, is there one of these Declaration of Candidacy documents? But their residency in Oregon City and their voter registration was checked out. But this just goes to the point that I made, and much of my correspondence to you. First of all, Mr. Berman is correct, and the city attorney's office has stated as well. The items that may be produced to help prove that someone is a resident that are residing in statute, first of all, that statute applies to legislative races, but for a variety of reasons, it's appropriate that they be considered here as well. But they're not exclusive. And as Mr. Berman indicated, you don't have to have any of them. You know, it's not required that you have a house. It's not required that you receive mail. It's not required that you get electricity, or you have running water, or anything else to run for office. I mean, we're having Constitution Week coming up here, folks. And, you know, none of those things are required. So therefore, if they're not required to run for office, you can't require that someone produce them in order to allow them to be on the ballot. Can't, you can't do it. And where I find, where I break with the procedure that we've had here, the procedure's been fine and fair up to a point. Where I break with it is then when he can't produce those items for the reasons he stated, now he's told, "You will not appear on the ballot unless the Oregon City Commission permits you to appear on the ballot." That's very interesting. This would be the first time that this commission's ever had that happen. So an exception's already been made for him. But I find it interesting that in the past, a simple declaration of residency appears to be sufficient. And I've argued to you in my written materials that a person's statement, their attestation that they are a resident is sufficient. Otherwise, a homeless person could not run. And it's that simple. Then Mr. Berman isn't homeless, but the same principles apply here. Same principles apply here. And so we had to write up our own declaration, our own sworn statement. By the way, these prior declarations that were relied upon weren't even under oath. If someone tells you that they are registered, or that they are a resident of Oregon City, and there is no evidence, I mean, not a scintilla of evidence, that they actually reside somewhere else, I submit that it's grossly improper for the city to tell that person, unless they can prove otherwise, they can't, they can't be on the ballot. I submit that that is absolutely backwards. I submit that the presumption, once a person declares that he's a resident in this city, the presumption is that they are telling the truth. All persons are presumed to tell the truth, by the way, as a matter of law. Unless someone here in this room can rebut the fact that Mr. Berman is a resident of Oregon City, I expect that his name is going to appear on the ballot. Or I expect that he's going to get a lot of free publicity from the court case. I mean, that's not a threat. It's just a fact. Now, Mr. Gifford, it's very obvious to me, when he talked earlier, who he's talking about. Let me just say this, because it relates to this issue as well. Quoting what an elected official said at a prior meeting is not an ad hominem attack on somebody. And pointing out somebody's financial or other interest in something is not making an ad hominem attack on somebody. Or demonstrating reasons why a person shouldn't be believed is not making an ad hominem attack. I suggest Mr. Gifford look up "ad hominem" again. And this is important, because when Mr. Berman makes allusions to coincidence, now, it is a coincidence. Is it more than a mere coincidence? Don't know. Don't have any evidence that it is at all. Be the first to tell you.
I don't know right, I don't know right at the moment.
No, no. Well, that's because I haven't, that's because I haven't finished my thought yet. I don't know if it's a coincidence or not, mere coincidence or not. But for someone in Mr. Berman's position to file for office, then be immediately, you know, challenged by somebody who's on the other side of a particular issue that's been on our minds today, and told that he lives in West Lynn, and then, and then, to be told your name's going to come in the ballot because you can't provide sufficient proof that you reside in Oregon City, for him to allude to that, to make those suggestions, and for me to put that evidence regarding the Facebook matter and everything else into the record, I am simply doing my job. Now, who among you, in his position, would be satisfied and not have concerns? Not be, not be thinking, maybe there's something to it, maybe there isn't. How dare anyone belittle him for wondering about that? As a very hard working person who practically, you know, lived in his business at various times, but who does have an ongoing continuous residence at 316 South McLaughlin, there is nothing that disqualifies Mr. Berman from running for office in Oregon City. I expect that, after your deliberation, that you will place his name on the ballot. If someone has, can answer, just as a matter of edification for all of us, why only the form SEL 101 now apparently is being used, and no longer the declarations of candidacy, that would be great. I know there's another procedure where you can get signatures, and there's other methods. That's something, I don't know what the answer to that is. But I can just say this, if, I would submit that if Mr. Berman had had this Declaration of Candidacy and signed it, I would hope that we wouldn't be here right now. Maybe we still, we still would be. But for goodness sakes, for the future, you know, there's only, there's only so much you can do to say, "Somebody, prove it, prove it, prove it, prove it," you know? I mean, at least nobody's claiming that he wasn't born in the United States, or that he has a false birth certificate. I mean, seriously, seriously. And I appreciate the levity and humor we all had earlier, but this isn't funny. It's not funny, when someone's constitutional right to run for office, you know, is being challenged in this way. I will say this, though. I don't, I don't impugn any bad motives to anyone who works for the city at all. And again, as I said, at least for the, at least going back for a period of two years, there's a very consistent manner in which Ms. Iid checked things out, and once she had, and anything that appeared to prove somebody was a resident, that was fine. This particular instance points out something, though, that we need to keep in mind for the future. And I would submit to you that henceforth, if somebody declares and says that they're a resident of Oregon City, absent some proof to the contrary, you need to put them on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Probably you should turn the mic back so Kathy could be heard.
Is she still there?
Kathy, you're still there, right?
To the speaker. Kevin, can you, yeah, there you go.
There we go. Okay.
We've got a couple people, well, only one that's, that's not a decision maker, William Gifford. Unless you've got written testimony, Mr. Gifford, I don't think we're going to accept anything. Okay? With that, I guess we start dialogue. Do we need any specific instructions?
I do.
Well, no, yeah. Before we start the dialogue, do we need specific instructions from our attorney?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I did prepare a memorandum, and hopefully you've had a chance to look through it. And the question before the commission is relatively simple. There is a question, you know, the question is whether or not Ms. Berman is, has resided in the city during the 12 months immediately preceding the election. You're the city recorder, and what she did, both in other cases and in this case, what raised the question, the response, and, you know, what you have in front of you is his response to the initial filing, the information from the county elections division, the information he provided to the city recorder after that, as well as the affidavits and other information that came forward. And the question before you is, is that, you know, has he established that he's been a resident of the city for the 12 months preceding the election? Mr. Hunt raised the question of, can you actually prove that? And, you know, he was focused on the past two months. And, you know, that may be an issue in whether or not you seat somebody if that occurs. But what you can do is look backwards at those 10 months that, you know, precede the filing of the candidacy. And if, in fact, somebody isn't qualified, there's no reason you can't address that now. So I don't think that issue goes anywhere. There's also some mention of a lawsuit. I think it's unlikely that any law, you know, you can't stop a lawsuit from being filed, but given the charter's provision that you are the final judge of the qualifications of the candidacy, of the candidate, as well as some Oregon and US Supreme Court law that basically says, in a situation like that, the courts are not going to intervene in something like this. There was an issue involving a legislator and whether he was going to be seated at one point in the past. And the Oregon Supreme Court said, "We're, that's not a question we can answer. That's the legislature's job." So I would suggest, don't make your decision out of what might happen in litigation in the future.
Right.
I do think the point that both Mr. Berman and his attorney made, that this is a very important question, you know, the ability to run for office and to participate in the Democratic representative system that we have, is a pretty important right. Mr. Hunt also mentioned the Hawaiian candidate. One of the things to keep in mind there also is the US Senate doesn't have the residency requirement for, to be there for the year preceding, so you're just not going to have that type of question. But at the end of the day, the question before you is not whether you agree with Mr. Berman on any issues, whether, you know, it's a simple thing. Has he, has he been a resident for the past 12 months? And that, that's what you have before you. If you have other specific questions, I'm happy to give you whatever guidance I can.
I assume that there was sufficient public notification at this hearing that anybody that had written documentation that he was not a resident had opportunity to present that. I see none of that here.
I agree that, you know, that we provided what notice we could. And you're right, there, I'm not aware of any documentation that says that, no, he has not been a resident.
Okay. Okay, with that, Commissioner Mum.
Okay. Well, very enlightening. I appreciated all that. I would have to say, though, that I know when I ran for office, I'm sure that I, I had a background check, and I was checked on. And I know that our city commissioner, our city recorder does a consistent, fair job all the way around. There's no doubt about that in my mind. A couple of comments that came to my mind is the affidavit, in that it says, "My intent." It's not, "I was, I will be." It was "my intent." I just don't like that kind of wording, because it just, you know, I'm not an attorney.
Which exhibit? Can you say which exhibit we're talking about?
It's the affidavit, right there.
This would be the candidate's affidavit?
This is his affidavit. Okay.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
And then, I mean, if you could show a postmark, an envelope postmarked with his name, anything, I would be more than happy to jump on that and say he qualifies. But you have 30 days to change your driver's license. I mean, did that get done? Can you prove when that was done? I don't know. Is there anything? I really am wanting to see something, a document of some sort with your name and a post office box from an official, unbiased, utility, driver's license, something. I don't know. I just think that it comes down to, do we accept it or not? And I don't, I don't know that it was meant.
Commissioner Smith, I'm just going to, since you brought up a specific thing, we had Mr. Hunt talking about not being, not knowing ahead of time whether you're going to live in, by the time the election comes. I would read this based on what Mr. Hunt had said and perhaps his communication with Mr. Berman, is my intention that I will have been a continuous resident of Oregon City for a period of at least 12 months immediately preceding the election. And I think he was trying to perhaps deal with some of the comments that Mr. Hunt brought in, you don't know what's going to happen between now and the two months before the election now. And I would read it that way. I would not-
That's an assumption.
Well, I don't, I think it's pretty clear. He's making some, immediately preceding the November election. He's made, I think, a clearer that he has been a resident up to the 12 months prior to the election being held. He's just indicating, he's still planning to be here for the next two months. So that's the way I read that. But I think we can interpret things as we wish.
Yes.
With that, Commissioner Smith.
Question for our attorney. This may be the first time this type of thing has come to the commission, but I do not, this is not the first type, this is not the first time this sort of thing has happened in Oregon City, I'm assuming.
And Ms. Iid may be a better, you know, some issues have been raised about residency in the past.
I've been here seven years, and I've never not, I have not come across anyone who was not qualified. They, I have come across instances where there was a problem with the registration, but they did just what Mr. Berman did. They went to the registration office and fixed it.
Okay. So for me, the testimony helped, helped a little bit. To me, the question is whether or not Mr. Berman lived in Oregon City the three months before he changed his voters. Voters' pamphlet. Yeah. Or his voter's registration. Because it's obvious, that was changed the first week of February, so that's from February to November, I'm not a math teacher, but nine months?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so we know he was, we know he lived in Oregon City that time, or at least that's the address being used. So the question is, do I believe that he lived there three months before that? And based on the material that we've gotten, I believe that. So, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at. It's a three-month period of time. We've had, we have two affidavits at least stating that he's been there that time. One which is from the owner of the house. We have other testimony, or written testimony from neighbors. You know, the three months is, you know, not a huge amount of time to believe that someone would take to change their voter's card. It doesn't deal with the problem in the future, because I think this is a problem. I think that we have to have a way to deal with this kind of situation. Not just this exact situation, but a situation where someone that does live in Oregon City that doesn't have a house is still able to run for City Commission. So I think there's other issues that we have to deal with. And usually, we don't know that until they come to us. And so I think this is a good thing to know. I believe that he was there three months before, before the change of the address. And I guess my question is, is there was no evidence- And I guess my question is, is there was no evidence brought forward, were to the commission saying that Mr. Berman doesn't live in Oregon City? Let's say that happens in the next two months. Let's say that happens after the election. At that point in time, is there recourse for the city commission to deal with it if, in fact, we find out that he really wasn't living in Oregon City at the time that he stated he was?
And this gets to one of the things I addressed in the memo about, you know, when the appropriate time to-
Right.
...deal with these issues are. What we had was the city recorder, with the information she had, had, you know, this was without the affidavits, that she wasn't satisfied that the qualifications had been met.
Right.
We now have, you know, more information that you may or may not accept. The question of the qualification, when they become seated, I think you can come back and revisit that question. It's, it, there are situations in other jurisdictions where a challenge has been made to the seating of a, someone who has won, won the election. You know, I think from city staff, the city recorder, and city attorney's office, we thought, since this is a live issue, it may be better to raise it now than to go through a process and then come back and bring it again, so.
Well, and I think we are. I just wanted to know if there's a way to correct it if we find out later that, you know, we have, I don't know.
Commissioner Roth, you wish to speak to this issue?
Yes, I had a couple of things to say. First of all, I agree with Mayor Neely on the intent of the statement being that he cannot predict the future like has been stated in past meetings. Second one is, I would rather believe someone and have someone come forward to prove that he did not live in Oregon City. I think that is the more important question at this point. And thirdly is that when I ran for election, one of my opponents had their mailing address as West Lynn. It did not come before the city commission, and so I never have found out the way that that was resolved, but I know that that was noted at the time.
Do you know how that was resolved, Nancy?
A mailing address is not a resident, I mean, there's two address spaces on the form, a residence address and a mailing address. And the mailing address could be anywhere, a post office box or whatever, but it's the residence that we have to deal with.
But our state code says mailing address.
I don't know-
And I think Commissioner Roth may be referring to the provision that, in the list of things you can look at, where the candidate receives personal mail is one of the factors that the state looks at in terms of qualification for legislative race, and that the city provided to Mr. Berman as a potential to do this. I think what Ms. Hyde is saying is that, that's one factor. And when she got the registration material for this person, it had a mailing address and another address on the form itself, or?
On Mr. Berman's, or?
No, the-
Yes. There would, there would have to be a residence address to check for the voter registration and to determine if that person lived within the city for a year.
And so when you checked with the voter registration, it-
I would have had to have done that, yes. I would have determined the date that they were registered and at where.
The voter registration records at least gave some indication that he had been, that that person had lived in the city, had been a resident for over a year.
Right.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question. Does Michael, or does Mr. Berman receive personal mail at the 505?
You want to answer from there affirmatively or not?
Yes, all of my mail.
Michael, can you please come up to the microphone?
All of my mail, until I broke my hand at OHS, and I got it fixed at OHSU, I decided to have that mail come to the 505. Every bit of my mail, or to 316 McLoughlin, I'm sorry, all of my mail comes to the 505. My voter's registration, my new voter's thing just came in the mail a few days ago, to the 505.
Okay, so your mail, ever since you purchased the 505, has come to the 505?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And when did you purchase?
July of 2010, I believe.
June.
A month, June of 2010. My Multnomah County registration, I don't know that I canceled or if the council's on its own, expired when?
I don't remember. It was two-
I'll guess 2011, I believe.
It automatically expires when you register somewhere else.
Yeah. So I, that, that was over a year ago. Actually, I think there's some overlap there, but it had to have gone through some period of time to change, but it did change, so.
Okay.
Obviously, I wasn't registered there anymore. I was registered here.
Right.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I guess my comments are, I'm next. Even though I didn't punch it. Two comments. One is, if something transpires between now and election date, and somebody provides some kind of conclusive written documentation that he was not a resident, I'm sure that they'll take it to Steve Mays or to somebody like him, and in fact, that will be grist for the, for the, for the election itself. The, and apparently, should something come forward after, should he win, and were he seated, that indicated that he had not been truthful, and this was not his residence, and that can be dealt with in another matter. I guess my feeling is what I stated before there, I think it was sufficient notice that if there were, there was a citizen who had documentary evidence that he resided elsewhere, then I'm willing to take the affidavits that we have here as, as sufficient. Commissioner Mum.
Well, I just want to go back to the basics. We have this rule that says you have to be here 12 months prior to. So what are we doing with this rule? Are we just throwing it out? Are we throwing it to the side?
We are the, we're the decision makers.
Okay. So I just want to be clear on the rule that we have before us and what we're going to do with it.
We have affidavits before us. That is written documentation. Having nothing else from my standpoint to contradict those affidavits, I would say that's probably sufficient from my standpoint.
May I make a statement?
Yes.
We do have the rule, but we also have a condition in case the rule can't be enforced, and we're using that condition at this point.
And we are the ultimate decision makers.
Correct.
I mean, I doubt if anybody couldn't take us to any court based on our decision.
People could sue.
Well, excuse me, I didn't, I didn't even say that. I don't think anybody could sue us successfully.
Yeah. As one of my mentors said, you know, if someone were to accuse you of killing Kennedy, I'd give you about a 90% chance of getting you off. You know, you just never know where things are going to go, but given the research I've done, I don't think it's likely that any decision you make would be overturned.
Right. Are we ready for a motion?
I don't know. I'm not.
I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move that we accept Mr. Berman's application for candidacy for position number three.
I'll hear second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I don't know. The rules are the rules for me. It's hard for me to look at these.
We're still meeting the rules.
Yeah, we're meeting-
The evidence that we have says 12 months.
Yeah, we have, yeah, I think we're meeting the rules.
We all, I don't know, yes.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mum?
No.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Neely?
I'll do Carl off the block here and go, yes.
And for the record, Carol Polly has abstained from, or recused herself.
Thank, thank you for your time. And I'm sorry you had to go through this, but the fact is, we have a very good city recorder. There may have been instances in the past where such issues may have been there, and maybe we just didn't have the, the due attention that our city recorder gives to these issues. And of course, you've acknowledged you have no issue with her actions. And thank you for your due diligence on that, too, Nancy. I appreciate that.
Just for everyone's benefit, could we find out?
Sir, could you please come up? Could you please come up?
Governor of Oregon City, I just thought maybe, while you're still talking about it, could we find out for everyone's benefit why the statements of candidacy apparently are no longer being used, in which someone would have specifically attested that they lived here the requisite amount of time?
I could leave that to the city recorder. Do you need any time to answer that question? Go ahead.
No. It's redundant. It's not a form that's required.
It's a state form.
The state form addresses all those things, and what really counts is my call to the voter registration office to determine the residency.
I don't want to entertain this debate at this time. We've made a decision in this particular case. If at one point we want to address that legal issue, we're obviously not going to make any decision, any kind of discussion that occurs here, so I'm just going to leave that aside for the moment. And with that, we go on to our next agenda item, which is a personal, make sure I got this right, second reading of ordinance 12-1007 of the Oregon Municipal Code Amending Chapter 8 to Related to Solid Waste. We have the staff, this person to speak to it is our police chief, Mike Conrad. Do you want to say anything? Okay. This is a second reading, and so we have gone through this process again. Does anybody want to put forward the motion for a second reading?
I move to approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 12-1007.
Second?
Second.
I was distracting the city attorney.
Uh-oh. It's, are we on the wrong?
No.
No.
Because our screen says motion by, oh, that's the previous motion.
We're not doing the electronic voting tonight because of Commissioner Roth not being able to participate.
So ordinance number dash 12, ordinance number 12-1007, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City amending Chapter 8.20 of the Oregon City Municipal Code related to definitions for solid waste collection and disposal, exceptions from franchise.
Any discussion? Hearing done? Roll call?
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
And 1208 is the personal services agreement, Kennedy Jinx Consultants Engineering Development Review Services. Mr., or interim public affairs director John Lewis is on the list here to discuss the, this.
Thank you, Mayor Neely and Commissioners. This is pretty straightforward. It's a personal services agreement with Kennedy Jinx. We've contracted with Kennedy Jinx in the past. In fact, we have a current contract with Kennedy Jinx. This is a new contract for an additional two years with the option of extending that two more years. And it's a $160,000 contract. We use Kennedy Jinx, or we have in the past used them for development review services. Many of you know Bob Cullison. Bob is retiring on September 21st, so I'll make a little stab at that. He's, we're also planning to have a small retirement event here at City Hall on the 18th from 3:00 to 5:00, so. But even though we've had this agreement before and used Kennedy Jinx during our most busy development review periods, been slower in, on that front, but we expect with Bob leaving, leaving, at least on an interim basis, to use Kennedy Jinx at a pretty high level to help get some of the development through the system. So other than that, it's, I guess, you have any questions about this contract?
What is, what is our, what is our limit in terms of, actually, this is a position, this is apparently not a competitive type of-
No, this is qualifications-based selection, and we've been negotiating with them on time, and it's really a $160,000 not-to-seed contract. We use it as we need it. During the past two years, we used very little of that $160,000. It was also a $160,000 contract. We used like, I don't know, $13,000 during that time period, but like I said, it was pretty slow. So we're just trying to make sure we have that available for them to be on call as needed.
I just ask our attorney, the, I mean, we have a contract for a specific service. I think there's a certain amount below which it doesn't really have to come before us. Is that correct?
That's correct.
This doesn't fall in this category? Is that correct?
I believe that that's, that's correct. And what gets it a little, there are certain types of services, and engineering is one of them, that there's been a movement away through the legislative process from the dollar-based, you know, you can only look at the amount it costs, and you've got to pick the lowest bidder. For certain things, engineering, one of them, the idea is you look at qualifications, can these people do the job? And then you can negotiate price. And so it's, it's changed a little bit, and I believe with this, this particular agreement, it's one of those ones where you get away from price.
So do I hear a motion before us on approving the personal services agreement with Kennedy Jinkx Consultants?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Mum, seconded by Commissioner Polly. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
And finally, under the regular items that we have here under Agenda, ordinance for introduction 12-1006, ordinance amending the 1204 of the Oregon City Municipal Code for pavement restoration standards. And again, I believe it's going to be, Mr. Lewis is going to be speaking to this.
Again, thank you for your time on this issue. So this is, also seems fairly straightforward. We're amending the municipal code. This is a follow-through with a commitment we made several years ago with the pavement maintenance utility fee to increase the standards by which we would repair trenches, and so this standard does that. We've had a significant level of review by staff and technical experts looking at other agency standards and how we do this. Basically, the ordinance itself adopts a new standard, which is attached, includes new language that allows the standard to be modified by resolution rather than by ordinance. Right now, to amend this, if we don't include this language, to amend standard specification, we do need to do that through ordinance, and we're asking through this revision to be able to do that by resolution. It requires the city to comply with ODOT standards, the ODOT, American Public Works standards, which is what most of our construction standards comply with anyway, and it provides the city an option, the option for charging a fee for processing these permits. So the standard itself is pretty significant in terms of difference. Before, we really just required a developer, when they wanted to build a utility line, to overcut that trench by six inches on each side and then pave it back. This has got more of a matrix style, but at a minimum, it would be a one-foot standard, one-foot standard T-cut, but at a maximum, it would be much more. So for instance, if a developer, or if the city cuts into an arterial street or a collector street, especially if it's new, so the requirements get more rigid based on the newness of the pavement and based on the importance of the street or the classification of the street. So for instance, if you, if a developer came in to cut a arterial street that was less than three years in age, most likely they'd be required to repave that whole street. So it provides some exemptions and a lot of details. I'm not sure how much you read that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about it.
Mayor, I have one comment.
Yes, go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank John Lewis and his department for bringing this forward. This is a timely ordinance in particular, because you are now, as a community, starting to make some significant investments in upgrading your street infrastructure. And we don't have the same freeze-thaw cycles as we've had in some of the other cities and other states I've worked have had very severe freeze-thaw cycles, but those, we still have them. And they do have a big impact on, on our streets, particularly when a street is cut. So this is very timely because of the amount of investment the community has decided to make over the last couple of years, and will continue to bank in its street infrastructure. infrastructure. And it's just good, sound public management of your public assets. So thank you, John, for bringing that forward.
Yes, that's great.
Say, we've had-- there's been several people that have had their thoughts around this particular issue, from the inspector who has to enforce it to the engineer who likes it to meet the appropriate standards. So it's been a group effort, and I think it's the best we could get and manage appropriately.
Any questions or discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, this is an ordinance, so we should-- we need to read it first, if I could before you. Ordinance number--
Well, I mean, I've got to get them--
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
It doesn't indicate it here, but is this is a first reading, or does this go into actual--
Yes, this is a first reading.
So we're dealing with this as a first reading?
Yes.
And so--
Move to approve the first reading of proposed ordinance number 12-1006, an ordinance amending Title 12.04 of the Oregon City Municipal Code.
Wait, here, a second.
Second.
And we'll go ahead with the reading. My problem is that when I get ordinances read, sometimes I try to take the vote before the reading occurs. So I'm glad you messed up this time.
Ordinance number 12-1006, an ordinance amending Title 12.04 of the Oregon City Municipal Code.
Go ahead with the roll call.
Commissioner Pauli?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
The only thing before us is the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving second it for the vote.
Commissioner Pauli?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Passes. And with that, I believe we'll go-- I lost my agenda. I presume we're going to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so first of all, I learned from one of Congressman Wyden or Senator Wyden's staff that there's an issue about coal shipments that are-- could likely increase the traffic through Oregon City. And this is happening throughout the gorge and Hood River and other places, even on the Washington side as well, where some cities are really getting concerned about the potential for, you know, coal trains that are several miles long, moving at 25 miles an hour with uncovered loads, what the effect could be on air quality, what the effect could be on traffic and congestion and safety and all of the rest. And so I have some articles here. I'm going to pass these out to you. And in your spare time, if you can look these over. About all the city can do in this position right now is take an official position by resolution stating whether you're for-- you know, you don't have to state if you're for it. I think they're going to-- they're going to be shipping a lot of coal through here, maybe no matter what you say. But it might not be a bad idea to express that on the record ahead of the impact. And then I could share that with our federal delegation. And to the extent that that can ameliorate that for us and represent our interests, that would be a good thing. This is-- this effort is probably going to bring jobs for somebody. But the communities through which this commerce travels, and actually, it's going down to Eugene and then over to the coast.
Oh, is it?
So if it was just going to Portland and out the river, we'd have a different situation. But it's not doing that. So it could really impact rail traffic in Oregon City. And before that hits its full speed, I want you to be aware of it. So we can sort of be out in front of the issue. If you decide you want to go that way, let me know, and we'll get an ordinance. In fact, we'll probably just acquire a copy of an ordinance from one of the other cities who've adopted this. I think Eugene is very concerned about it. I think probably they're more for air quality than any other-- any other purpose. And there could be some compromise in the works in the future where the loads would be covered. But that does increase the cost quite a bit. And they may tell you that there's a spray that you can put on there to suppress the dust. When I was city manager in National Wisconsin about nine years ago, we-- well, it was less than that, about eight years ago, we tried to-- there was a giant coal dock there right on Lake Superior. Port City, thousand-foot boats would come in there, ships from-- in fact, one of our commission members' brother went down on the Fitzgerald, Edmund Fitzgerald. And that was like required reading if you were the city manager there. So-- but I can tell you from experience, we had a city marina with a lot of beautiful white sailboats and yachts right next to this gigantic coal dock that had a mountain of coal on it. And we were told over and again by the coal company that the suppressant would prevent the dust from migrating onto the boats. It never did. They may have improved the suppressant since that time, but, you know, I'll believe it when I see it. So that information is for you to ruminate on, and let me know if you'd like us to prepare an ordinance. We will certainly do that.
I've been following this somewhat. I understood that the port decision had not really been set. I mean, I've heard several potential ports that they may operate out.
Right.
But in fact, if one of the possible ports is one that-- I don't know where it'd be, gooseberry or Red's Board or something that takes it through Eugene, then it is of direct concern to us.
Right. Exactly. So as I get more information about that issue, I will certainly pass it on. I'm somewhat in reliance on the senator's office and the federal delegation to inform me when they hear these things on the Hill and they communicate them to us. So also, let's see here. Oregon City will be awarded the local government grant through the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for our Rivercrest Restroom Park Project. Kudos to Scott Archer and his team.
Great.
Great.
The small team that gets it done for Oregon City. The grant is for $150,000. We have a $50,000 match, so it's a $300,000 project. And our 50% will be largely paid for with SDC funds. So Scott, another home run for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Then, at our last council meeting, we were a citizen-- I think it was under citizen comment, ask us about-- ask something about debt and what was the city's total debt. And so-- and then consequently, the next day, I believe, there was something on Oregon Public Radio about Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, which has the highest debt load in the nation right now. And that, given with the California-- some of the California cities and some other cities, even on the East Coast, that have gone bankrupt, it makes people like me and city managers across the country really look long and hard at their finances. And I've talked a lot about our finances through the budget process. But I ask our finance department to look at the city's total debt. Now, they looked at these separate, the city debt and urban renewal debt, because they are separate. They have different standards, as we've heard tonight. But I wanted to report first on the city's debt. And this is really for every man, woman, and child in Oregon City. So you base it on the total population. What's the percentage-- or what's the number of debt that is every single resident shares in? And I think this is timely because I believe it was yesterday or the day before when the national debt clock ticked over at $16 trillion. And I'm happy to report that Oregon City's debt-- and this-- what I'm going to do is I'm going to tell you a figure that each person is burdened with in Oregon City. And then I'm also going to give you those figures for Lake Oswego, West Lynn, and Wilsonville. And I think what's remarkable here is sort of a legacy of-- and I don't know how long this legacy goes back. I've been here two and a half years, and I don't think we've done anything to make our situation worse. In fact, I think we're financially stronger now than we were then. But the credit here goes to my predecessors and yours and many of you, and some of you in particular, were here in service for a long time. And also to the community who adjusts its expectations. And I don't know if it's that pioneer spirit where they just roll up their sleeves and get things done on their own, or if their expectations are that different from Lake Oswego. But we looked at the total debt that the city has, and then we looked at our liquid assets. And this doesn't include buildings, equipment, bulldozers, things that we own that have value, parks, land. So if we just look at our liquid assets and apply that to our total debt, every man, woman, and child in Oregon City has equity in the city of a plus $174. So you basically have no debt as a city.
No debt.
Now, if you come up here and try to cash in your $174, we're probably going to make you wait.
[laughing]
And it's arguable whether that's a good thing. Because if you do everything on a cash basis, there are certain opportunities that-- there are certain policies that may not be the best situation to be in, but it's certainly better than being in some of these other situations. Now, these other cities I'm comparing us to, as far as I know, their financial situations are relatively strong. So these aren't-- I'm not suggesting there's anything wrong with the management or the way they're doing it or their debt loads. I think they're very appropriate for what they're saying.
You just want to have a basis for bragging, so go ahead and do it.
Well, I want you to understand. I want you and our citizens to understand that Oregon City is run on almost a cash basis. I mean, we just don't take on a lot of debt that we can't afford to pay for. So if we look at that same figure for West Lynn, for example, it's $1,558 per person.
That's a negative.
That's negative. That's owed on top of the--
What was that number again?
$1,558.
You're not going to go around and gloat anywhere, are you?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got that one. Excuse me. That's Lake Oswego.
It's very interesting.
Well, that's Lake Oswego.
Oh, that was Lake Oswego.
Very small type on this bridge. If Lake Oswego is 1,558, West Lynn is 773, and Wilsonville is 763. And you are the other direction by 174.
Finance is not my area at all. I have a real great credit record, and that's all I need to know about finance. But I don't understand a positive debt number.
Well, what it means is that if you look at the cash liquid assets that the city has and apply it to the current debt load-- because we do have a debt load of-- let's see here.
In other words, we have more money than we have debt.
We have $674.
I think that's all I need.
If we didn't have any money, we'd have $674 per capita.
Yes.
But since we have money and liquid assets, and when we apply our liquid assets, every person in the community has $174 of positive net equity in this corporation.
Isn't that great?
And our tech-savvy city attorney just gave me his smartphone, and it shows that the share for Portland, the city of Portland, per person, $11,104.72.
I don't think that's offset by the cash they have.
It probably isn't.
I don't think it's going to make as much of a difference.
But even if it isn't offset, it's still a lot higher than our $674 beforehand. Our urban renewal situation is--
So do you think that has anything to do with why we didn't get money for the Ermitingher House?
Yeah.
From the Portland City Quail?
They always seem to find money when they need it.
That's true.
What's important about this for me is the-- I want our government and our elected representatives and our citizens to have a relationship that they can trust this entity to do the right thing with their resources. I think that's really important for us.
That is.
Our credibility is at stake every time something comes up on the ballot or every time there's a need. And we have things in our charter that require us to get approval for different expenditures, and we're-- we could have more of those in the future. So I think it's really important to have that credibility. Let's see here. I believe that's all I had. I want to make sure. Does staff, any of you have anything? Nobody else does? I'm all finished, Mayor.
Okay.
I think-- oh, that's right. Thank you. Thank you. I knew I was missing something. Our-- just have lost my notes. Give me just a second to find those. The Oregon City Police Department is going to be holding their third Citizen Academy every Wednesday evening from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. beginning September 19th through November 14th. So Chief, really appreciate that. This is the third year for that program.
Mm-hmm. That's great.
And it's just fantastic, and I'm really glad that they're doing that. And thank you.
I'm going to make a request. When we're actually making announcement of future events, let's see if we can get them right after the consent agenda, because as you can see, when we get through our business, there aren't many people here. So if we can flag those announcements, specific announcements of events coming up, and get them right after our consent agenda.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
All right. All this is on our website as well, if that's any consolation. The Public Works Department has completed their slurry seal projects, and Nancy's going to play for us, I think, a recording of a phone message we got from a resident. They completed 96,250 square yards, which in layman's terms means four and a half miles of road surface treatment in Oregon City.
Wait a minute. I want to make sure. I call into the city and make a statement, and I'm being recorded?
Ah!
They left a message for us and wanted us to share this.
They're recording all of us.
Yeah. And we can't even-- we really can't. We can't ascertain the last name anyway, so I think we're fine there.
Okay.
So hopefully, this'll work. Okay, I've never done this before. Here we go.
Hi, my name is Sharon Hodges. I live on Prospector Terrace. And I'm calling to say I just absolutely love the slurry seal. They did it yesterday. They were right on time. They finished on time. It just looks utterly awesome. I'm thrilled. It makes my house look brand new. I love all you guys. I just want to thank you so much. I know it's probably a thankless job, but anyway, it just looks awesome. Thank you so very much. It was worth the inconvenience. I love it. Thank you. Bye-bye.
That's very nice.
And all the public works staff get to hear that, right?
They haven't, actually. I would like to share that with them.
Yeah, please do.
They will.
Okay, really quick. These are my commission reports. I need to remember that. Ermitingher House, we are continuing to make progress on that. We have so far accumulated a total of $415,500 as of today for the Ermitingher House.
Yeah.
$415,500. Roughly $168,000 of that has been grants.
Wonderful.
And we're still moving forward. And that's less than two years working on it. So then also, the city's water division worked with Utility Services Association, completed a leak detection project for the year. The annual effort includes leak testing of approximately one-third of the city's water distribution system. The project this year discovered nine leaks that otherwise would have gone undetected. One leak was thought to have been leaking water at a rate of 20 to 30 gallons per minute.
Oh, my God.
The significant leaks, including the one I just mentioned, were all repaired last week. So that's good stuff.
That's great.
And then, last but not least, the final paving operation for 213. And my directions to John is also our final ribbon cutting for 213.
Yay!
Will be done in mid-September. Trees and shrubs will start being planted in September and be completed in both October and November. The ribbon cutting is expected to be in October of 2012. And now, I think I'm really--
Same as the bridge.
I got three ribbon cuttings on this project. That's great.
That's great.
We're wearing out the gold scissors.
Yeah.
That's great.
I did make the one announcement earlier on in terms of the memorial for murdered children. If anybody looked at the business section of the newspaper today, there was a article there on the Neighborhood Economic Development Corporation setting up a office in Oregon City. It's actually on High Street. It's a promenade building. And they are-- they work with people that are facing potential foreclosures. They've been very effective in this area, but they have not had an office in this area. And when I'm talking about this area, I'm talking about the Portland metro region. My statement's not quite accurate. Somebody was actually operating the business, but out of a house. And so he had one staff member. They have moved into the promenade building, and they had a-- they had an opening today. It was a very nice event. They have, I believe, four permanent-- five permanent staff there. They, perhaps based upon that article, they've had four people come in today to talk to them. They had some people that were-- came forward, people that they've actually already served through their small office that they had earlier, that actually talked about the services that they have received. It's the Neighborhood Economic Development Corporation. I was very happy to see them.
That's great.
I think it's significant, an organization like this is located in an area that is gorgeous in terms of the park, the often promenade, beautiful view of West Lynn on the other side.
Yeah.
And I think it's also significant in some other ways. The promenade, the actual wall was a WPA project during this recession. Of course, we had stimulus funds that went and restored that. So that attachment to trying to deal with issues that we have during this recession was there. Really overlooking, actually, the closed Heron site, I think, is rather significant because it gives an overall picture of the distress we've been in. But also, the fact that we have an organization here that is trying to work with people that have been under this distress, I think is a great location for them to be in. So I wanted to let everybody know about that.
That's great. That's great.
Next, Mr. Smith.
Um...
Are you going to go to Washington?
I've been to Washington State several times. I just wanted to remind everybody that school starts Monday, and we're a little behind everyone else, but I went back to school today, and students come back on Monday, so watch out for lots of kids on the streets and buses, and leave the house a little earlier, especially if you're going out Beaver Creek. That's it.
I wanted to comment because you mentioning the school district and so forth. There was an article in the newspaper that dealt with Oregon schools in general in terms of not producing people that can write in a comprehensive way, and in the article, it cited, and we've heard this before, about the great strides that Oregon City High School has made, and other school districts are looking at what's been done at Oregon City High School, so I wanted to give that credit again.
We had our in-service this morning. We had several representatives from different places coming to listen to our in-service today and just how to continue that work with literacy across all the curriculum. So, every teacher at the high school is involved in that, whether they're PE or art. We all have requirements within our school that we've set for ourselves to teach reading and writing in all of our classes and through different programs, and so we've been definitely noticed for that, and it's definitely affecting the achievement level of our students.
Well, I think it's so impressive. They've been recognized as outstanding in the state for three years running, and that included period of the furlough, too.
Yeah.
So, even though the resources aren't as strong as they were, the commitment, I think, of the staff there to make this work is tremendous. Anybody else?
Mayor, just... John just reminded me that the school zones, if anyone has questions about those at King and Mount Pleasant, they're going to stay in place because there are charter school services there, so we're leaving the school zones.
Oh, good.
Good to hear. Commissioner Roth, anything?
No, I would like to tell you, though, that I do... Did realize how much I appreciate Oregon City. I went for a bicycle ride in this place that was saying it's a wealthy area, and I was not allowed, and this speaks to this city's priorities, I was not allowed into their city limits because I was on a rental bicycle.
Oh, my gosh. It's nice.
So, I'm glad Oregon City doesn't have those kind of rules.
Yeah, I am, too. Well, thank you.
Wow.
What was that? Is there any other business for the good of the order? Hearing none? Richard?